Call me in order. Everybody stand, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, please keeping your thoughts and prayers. It was a very monumental day. We could have a ceasefire in Gaza. Probably more important, we've got thousands of pounds of humanitarian aid that is now being able to get in to the people that have been dying of starvation. Thank you, Stephen. We were gonna have a close session meeting here. Do we just do that now or move it to the end of the meeting?
I think we were supposed to have it 5:30, right?
Correct.
So I don't want to keep everybody waiting.
And to let you know, I was not aware of that. I've never done a close session thirty minutes before the beginning of the meeting. So I was just assuming it was gonna be at the beginning. So that was a disconnect.
How long do you think it will take?
Ten minutes.
I'd rather have it at the end of the meeting because there again, the folks out here have come to express and to hear other things. But it's up to the board to decide.
Archie, what do you say?
I'm thinking since everyone is here, I think we should start on time with our business. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes, so we'll add a close session back to the agenda.
Back to the very end. Okay, we have a proclamation here. A proclamation with Domestic Violence Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that violates an individual's safety and dignity through emotional, psychological, physical, sexual, and economic abuse affecting people of all backgrounds regarding of race, gender identity, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status. And whereas an estimated twenty-four people per minute in the United States experience rape, physical violence, or stalking by an intimate partner, and the effects extend beyond survivors to impact children, families, and communities. And whereas intersecting factors such as race, gender, age, ability, and language can increase vulnerability and isolation for survivors, underscoring the need for compassion, accountability, and equitable access to resources and support. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to honor survivors, recognize the dedication of those working to end abuse, and reaffirm our community's commitment to prevention and healing. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the town council of Black Mountain design dates October 25th, I mean October 2025, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month urges all residents to speak out against abuse, support survivors, and learn more about local resources available to those affected. This is the thirteenth day of October 25. Excuse me. Yes, you're right. The ethics statement. In accordance with the code of ethics adopted by the council, all council members have a duty to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner free of conflicts of interest. Is there any item on the agenda of the outcome of which will have a direct substantial readily identifiable financial impact for any council member, his or her family, or close business associates?
No.
Does any council member have a financial interest in any public contract coming for this council today?
No.
There being none, all council members have a duty and obligation to vote. Thank you. Citizen comment. All right. First of all, we have John Collins from Camp Branch Road.
I'm John Collins, 26 Shady Walk Trail, Black Mountain, North Carolina. You may recall I was here last week to bring to your attention water issues at Camp Branch Road. And we're still having issues. There's been a little progress made, but when you don't have enough water, it's not quick enough. It's not fast enough. If you had no water, you'd have an issue. And we don't have enough pressure. We're asking you to do more, I am. And I think that more needs to be done. Low pressure for our area and for the homes in that area, it's not enough. Almost two weeks ago, we were told that we'd be in contact with plumbers, that we're gonna possibly be doing the work, or some of the work, and we're still waiting on that information. So I guess I'm here to ask you, what can you do? Where are we going? That's in a nutshell. I hope that you as the town council have looked into these issues. Thank you.
Next up, Kim Latta.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just mention that there's another citizen comment, it's time that some of these might be appropriate to, depending on the topic.
Okay, I don't know whether that's, if you're here for, if you wanna speak, end up speaking twice. But there is an issue later on for trees at planting at the lake, but that may not be what you're up for.
Less than a minute. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I am Kim Latta, a board member of the Black Mountain Tennis Association.
And the address.
And I live at 65 Diana Drive in Carmody Acres. I've been made aware that proposal 11C suggests planting some trees between Lake Tomahawk Pool and the tennis courts. In time, that would mean leaves in the pool and on the courts. Now I know the pool shuts down before the leaves really begin to fall, but the tennis courts are open year-round. Leaves on the courts are a major nuisance and could be hazardous when wet. Therefore, they must be blown off the courts before playing. The Black Mountain Tennis Association is against proposal 11C. Please give this some consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. All right, next up is Linda Schifflit.
Hi, I'm Linda Schifflit. I live at 319 Circle Lane, and I'm here to address the town council on the lack of concern of the elderly and seniors in getting the senior center back up and running. And I'm one of those elderly. I'm seventy years old. A little background, I was ICU RN for forty years in emergency room in PACU, and I'm well experienced in the needs of the elderly. I've taken care of them all my life. And a few stats here in town. So the population of elderly in this town is 22.1. That's a quarter percent of the population of Black Mountain, who vote for you and trust the town council to have their best interests at heart. And several of you, like Pam and Archie, are also, you know, senior citizens. The mean, average, median age in Black Mountain is 60.5. So that's quite a large population that pays taxes and volunteers, they're very active. A lot of us volunteered at the visitor center during the crisis to take the load off the, you know, off the city, to direct people, take missing people, and send people out, and even gave phone numbers out for after-hours to get people's, missing citizens that they were concerned about. We sent people out. We did a lot during Hurricane Aleen, and I appreciate you all giving, you know, the city back up and running very quick. So I'm just curious why if the senior center, as I've been told, is too unstable to have the seniors in there, if they can put parks and recreation, and that's really a misappropriation of use of the Lakeview Center for active aging. You know, it should be up and running. It's been over a year now. A lot of these people don't have family members. A lot of them are disabled. Some are legally blind, some have Parkinson's disease, and that's their only source of socialization. They have classes on exercise and multiple classes a day. They also have Medicare information that they get people, help them to do their taxes. Pharmacists come in and educate them on their medications, which is really important as you get older. I'm sure you know without socialization that a lot of elderly people...
That's three minutes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Linda.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up, Joyce Miller.
My name is Joyce Miles.
Miles.
I live in Black Mountain.
And you got three minutes.
Okay, I live in Black Mountain at 1182 Old US 70 West. My concern is for the senior center. And I was surprised a few minutes ago to hear that there's been authorizations of trees planted around Lake Tomahawk. Lake Tomahawk has a more pressing issue that needs to be addressed rather than trees around the lake. We need the Lakeview Center open for the seniors. There are several seniors, the only means of transportation that they have is mountain mobility. Mountain mobility took them to the senior center to participate in the games and in the activities and the exercise classes, and to hear the speakers that come. And they have no way, means of transportation to do that now. They are serving meals as a takeout, but you're missing the point with the takeout. They appreciate them, but when you take the meals to them and to eat at home alone, you're still alone. And loneliness has become a chronic disease in America. I have become aware of a scam that could be potentially fatal to anyone, but especially to a senior. And they miss the opportunity to have speakers that come to the senior center to tell us about scams and things that people are trying to do out there to take advantage of the elderly. We need things that have been done recently that are unnecessary, that could, those funds could have been put to restoring the stabilization of the senior center so that we can come back up there and participate in the activities and to socialize. We really need the senior center open, so please, please, please make that consideration a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Carl Bartlett.
I thought I'd given enough speeches in this room. My name is Carl Bartlett, 277 North Fork Road. Good evening, mayor and board. I want to address the unfair attacks that have been made on the town manager and on the employees. It's been totally unfair. They do exactly what the board wants them to do. So if there's anything that's irresponsible, it's what the board has directed to the town manager and also his employees. Actually, the board serves as a board of directors, just like a board of directors with a commercial, in the commercial world. After the flood, relocation was needed for parks and rec. Three locations were available: Lakeview Center for Active Aging, Soccer Center, Carver Center. The idea was to just temporarily bridge this issue until better arrangements could be made. One year later, the bridge has turned into a parking lot. We have used the town board to advantage of the most vulnerable group in Black Mountain: the single, living alone, retired, limited incomes as a whole. These are people who built Black Mountain to the quality town that it is today, yet you totally won't to ignore them. Town receives fed funding through Older Americans Act. Funding several services also includes a place to congregate. You're not providing a place to congregate. Please don't lose this fed funding as you are in violation of the Older Americans Act. If a family had treated another member as indifferently as this board has treated its senior citizens, they would be charged with elder abuse. We have had eight deaths in our group since losing the senior center. I'm not calling the board murderers, but loneliness is a key factor in the demise of senior and elderly citizens. Looking at economics, you're supposed to be handling our funds, looking after our taxpayer money. When you look at the town budget, you folks budgeted $25,000 in revenue from rentals of the Lakeview Center, and same as last year. Yet you haven't made a dime. You've continued to let parks and rec park in there. After September, in real reality, you probably paid $50,000 to let them rent and let them pay it, stay in there, yet you've lost that revenue of $15,000. You've been given engineering reports for metal like engineering and rugs. These reports were presented to U and Construction and Go-For, for bids. One bid slightly below $5,000, the other bid was around $9,000. The low bids left out plumbing and electrical. Plus damage from the flood was not active.
Carl, that was at three minutes.
That's three minutes.
That was at three minutes. Appreciate it, though.
Can the next person yield to me so many? Well, you should be a shang boy. And Archie, I'm really disappointed in you.
All right.
We shouldn't have clapping and cheering during citizen comments.
That's up to y'all. That's not up to me.
It's just a matter of decorum.
Well, that's, that something has to be a policy, and if you want to set it up as a policy, then...
It's been a longstanding policy.
I don't know that it is written. Maybe kind of a thing, but there's...
If we need to pass the gavel to Archie to enforce that, do we need to do that?
Pass the gavel, Archie.
To make sure that we don't have clapping and cheering at a council meeting.
Well, I just, I think that these folks here are gonna conduct themselves. There's not a lot of cheering, not a lot of clapping. That's not, that's not... Anyway, the next one up is Sally Cochran. Remember, you got three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Three minutes. Hi, everyone. My name is Luke Bennett, and I work as the Mountains Conservation Coordinator.
Can I stop you just one second? Are you gonna, are you talking about your item?
Yes.
About the trees.
Why don't you wait till your item, and you can have the floor on that item?
Okay.
I mean, you're welcome to talk now, but you can speak. But yeah, you have as much.
Oh, you have more than three? Okay. We'll come back.
Okay.
Yeah, same way with Luke Bennett. You want to wait?
Oh, you're Luke.
Okay. All right, Gary Bartlett.
Gary Bartlett, ninety-five Camp Ranch Road. It's also been a month since I've been here asking for help to resolve the water issue problem on Camp Ranch. Nothing has changed since that time. In fact, this past Saturday, I had four PSI, four pounds of pressure at my house during high demand time. The only correspondence that I've heard is the contractor responsible for operating the town's water system has offered to install a town provided pumps in both my houses. This effort does nothing to restore the pressure deficit to the system. When I inquired about having a licensed plumber install the pumps, I was told by this contractor that he was licensed. However, my research on the licensing board website for North Carolina finds that there's no person by that name that holds a license. Well, further research went. I looked on the state DEQ site, and it revealed that this contractor was not licensed to operate a public water system in North Carolina. This is very disturbing and disappointing to me. How can this be allowed? Are we paying a contractor seventy thousand dollars a year for a service that they can't provide, that they're not certified to provide? Where's the oversight? Where's accountability? Other disturbing thing is I was told and I, that someone said, well, he's just another one of those disgruntled town employees. God forbid that. That's the furthest thing from the truth. Not many of you can say that you've served this town continuously for fifty-two years as a volunteer and career firefighter, fire chief, reserve police officer, chief of public safety, and I continue to serve on a state board representing the fire department. I'm not here asking for a special interest favor, or am I complaining about a service or a building or absence of a dog park or any, any other thing, including the steel damaged road to my house? I'm complaining about a necessity of life, the issue that should be the number one priority for any municipality. Good, clean water with adequate pressure for domestic consumption and fire protection. Both are state standards. You know, the storm should have reset all of our priorities. Don't y'all remember being without water? You board members are the only ones required to live in the city limits. Unfortunately, and it's very unfortunate, only a very small percentage of town employees and contract staff are taxpaying citizens of this town. If they had skin in this game or if it affected you, that problem may have already been resolved. I think it's about time that a representative of this town, excuse me, I want my water pressure restored back to the thirty-year number that I've had for thirty years. It's about time that a representative of this town go online and see if they can order a set large enough to start asking questions.
Okay, Gary. Thank you very much. All right, last one is Sykes Reagan. Unless you want to wait.
I'll observe my comments.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, the board has seen, has changed the agenda around, and so instead of waiting to the end to have comments from the town attorney, town manager, the mayor and the town council will now go ahead and get communication from the town attorney.
Just get that before. Presentation of law enforcement risk review.
Oh, we're going to do those before that. Okay. Excuse me. Okay, so now we're going to have presentation of law enforcement risk review award from the North Carolina League of Municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize your police department. Black Mountain participated in the league's risk review, law enforcement risk review. My name's Chet Adler. I'm a neighbor. I served on town council and mayor. It'll be done in about three more meetings. Praise the Lord. And, but I also work for the league. My boss, Tom Anderson's here. He's the director of risk management for the league municipalities. And I just want to take a few minutes to explain to you what your police department has completed. They've completed comprehensive agency review of forty high liability areas to ensure the agency adheres to the best practices of the industry and industry standards. Some of those areas that we look at in a risk review are police pursuits, use of force, employment practices, training, and so much more. Steps in the review process was an in-depth policy review with proofs of compliance. On-site agency assessment that included equipment and facility inspections, officer interviews, and observations of daily operations. And we're proud to report that Black Mountain Police Department has completed this law enforcement risk review process and added to their agency's achievements. To put this in the perspective for you, we represent several hundred cities across North Carolina. Two hundred pledged to go through this process. Only a little over a hundred have completed it, but Black Mountain has completed it twice. And in addition to that, Black Mountain is one of probably less than ten agencies that is also state accredited. So you have a dual review process occurring of your police department and their practices. And I wanted to tell you that that's commendable. I served as a commissioner on the Training Standards Commission and was present when Black Mountain was the first city outside of the pilot program to complete the review and accreditation process. And I think that speaks volumes to your chief, the staff that you have at Black Mountain Police Department. And I just want you to know that Stacy's work as a compliance manager was phenomenal. I'm actually using some of her work as examples for what we can do across the state, and I appreciate that. And I'd like to present a plaque to your chief and the town. And it says, "The North Carolina League of Municipalities recognizes Black Mountain Police Department for completing the law enforcement risk management review and proactively serving the community in a professional manner while taking steps to minimize the risk to your citizens and officers presented October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five." Congratulations, Stacy and chief. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could take one minute to speak. I want to take this time to, first of all, recognize Stacy and her work. It's a three-year process, so it's not something that happens overnight. We have to prove we did what they wanted us to do over a three-year time period, and it is very, very meticulous and very tough process. And I'm very thankful for Stacy and the entire staff and just want to commend them because it's not, without them, it would not have been done. And I just wanted to make sure that they got commended for that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming up. Next would be the Fire Department Annual Report.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and citizens of Black Mountain. As I understand, before you tonight to present the annual report of the Black Mountain Fire Department, this past year has been one of the most challenging and one of the most defining in our department's history. When Hurricane Helene struck, our town faced devastation unlike any other we've seen in decades. Flooding, landslides, and widespread infrastructure damage pushed every local resource to its limit. Our firefighters, along with partner agencies across the state and the nation, responded to hundreds of calls for help, performing rescues, clearing roads, and providing lifesaving aid under extreme conditions. Even when we were overwhelmed, we were never wavered in our commitment to serve. Helene tested our systems, our training, and our resilience. And in doing so, it revealed both our strengths and our weaknesses. One of the greatest lessons learned from Helene was the importance of community-based support. During the storm, it became clear that community emergency response teams or CERT was a necessary addition to our preparedness efforts. I'm proud to announce that Black Mountain's CERT team is now officially established and is the first CERT team west, CERT program west of Hickory. Today, it has approximately thirty trained members, and these citizens are trained to assist in disaster response, conducting light rescue, light search, provide first aid, and support communications during large-scale emergencies. CERT strengthens our town's resilience by empowering neighbors to help neighbors and ensures when disaster strikes, we're better prepared together. The concept of CERT was actually brought up prior to Helene, but after seeing the effects of this community pulling together for the common good, it was just more of a reassurance to put this program at the forefront. Sorry, it says I don't have the clicker. I guess I, yeah. All right, moving on to training and professional development. On the professional side, nearly all of our town staff have completed the National Incident Management System, Incident Command Structure, training. This ensures a smoother coordination and unified approach when working with other departments during complex emergencies. And our department continues to emphasize leadership, development, safety, and professional excellence because preparation and training save lives. Connecting with our community, we've also made great strides in public engagement. Our Fire Department's social media platforms have become powerful tools for education and connection. We have short videos created by our own firefighters that have reached thousands of residents and beyond, spreading safety messages, preparedness tips, and community updates. This initiative has not only improved awareness, but has also helped strengthen trust and connection between the department and the people we serve. So some of those lessons from Helene from last year. Helene was a teacher. It revealed that our deficiencies lie from equipment apparatus limitations to staffing and communication gaps. Even with assistance from other agencies across the state, the demand was staggering. But instead of being discouraged, we took those lessons to heart and turned them into action. We've improved communication systems. We've made significant progress improving our radio and communication systems where we re-implemented the older UHF and VHF systems to enhance reliability and added modern alternatives along with ham radio like Starlink and other redundant communication tools. I do want to take a moment to recognize two outstanding community volunteers, David Bilstrom and Mr. Borden Borden, here in this photo. Their technical expertise in radio communications has been invaluable, and their dedication has directly improved our emergency readiness. Staffing and department culture. We've made significant, oh, sorry. I'm proud to report that Black Mountain's Fire Department is fully staffed. We have no open positions. This achievement reflects the strong culture we've built, one based on professionalism, safety, and mutual respect. Our leadership philosophy is simple: empower every firefighter to reach their full potential. That culture of empowerment and excellence has made our department one of the most desirable places to work in western North Carolina. Apparatus and equipment updates. So regarding the equipment, the mini pumper that was approved for purchase last year is still in production. The apparatus manufacturing industry continues to face nationwide delays, but we remain optimistic and are working closely with the vendor to ensure delivery as soon as possible. The projection right now is September of twenty twenty-six. On average, any, any fire truck you order now is probably taken anywhere to three years plus. Modern, reliable equipment is essential to our mission, and we will continue to make those investments as a priority. Give up just a tad. Okay, thank you. Since Helene, our understanding of debris pathways and landslide patterns has improved significantly. However, the aftermath has also brought new risks. As we move into the fire season, which typically runs from now until around March, there are more than eight hundred thousand acres of storm debris across western North Carolina. And according to the U.S. Forest Service, this presents an increased potential for major wildfires, wildfires and significant loss. Our greatest concern is the limited availability of firefighting resources across local, state, and federal agencies. We're working proactively to address those challenges and prepare for the months ahead. So in this picture, what you're looking at here in the very top photo is the heat map indicating where most of the down debris is and the areas of concern. It wasn't so bad during Polk, even though Polk County fires looked very significant, but that, all that down debris wasn't seasoned. So it has been a year, a little over a year now, and just shy of a couple weeks, and all that down debris from a year ago has now been dried out, sitting, and it's just waiting to light off if, if something was to occur. Talking about the landslide and debris pathways, if the bottom picture there indicates where we had a landslide in western North Carolina. So you can see where the two maps more or less match each other to a point where the majority of the debris still lies. The interesting fact, I think it's on the next slide. So this slide here is just the path that Helene took along the coast. And here's landslide data for Black Mountain. So right there in the middle where you see, it's a little fuzzy, but where you can see words, that says Black Mountain, and that particular part is the Fire Department. If you look going towards the reservoir and up into Montreat, the yellow indicates historical landslide patterns. The green indicates on top of that where we had some sort of land movement. And then the gray, which is surprising, is the debris flow pathways where water, the pathways that water takes down the mountainsides into the valley areas. So our response and call statistics for twenty twenty-four, we had a total of three thousand and one calls. When it comes to our fire calls, we had eighty-five incidents that were actual fires, not potential fires, not food on the stove, actual fires which required suppression from the Fire Department. Rescue and EMS calls, one thousand one hundred and seventy-six calls for service. We've had eighty-four motor vehicle collisions in Black Mountain. And these are the statistics just for the, in the town limits, not East Buncombe District or beyond that we cover. Various call types, we had one thousand six hundred and fifty-six different calls from fire alarm activations, public assistance, et cetera. Now mutual aid. So mutual aid provided, there's a, if you're not aware, in Buncombe County and most counties across North Carolina, due to just staffing issues in general, which it has been this way for thirty years, as far as I've been a firefighter, every fire department in, and I came from Madison County, we had mutual aid agreements there with those fire departments. And what that means is we supplement, we supplement the staffing needs from neighboring fire departments to come in to our district and vice versa. We go to their. We go to their district to help with apparatus and, and staffing power. So for mutual aid that we gave, according to the contracts that we have, uh, we gave aid to neighboring fire departments ninety-three times. We received aid one hundred and forty-one times. Reason is so much is, hmm, we have now gotten to the point where we are having multiple calls at the same time. We only have two engine companies. The, even if we were to ever consider, which is very unsafe and statistics have proven to break up staffing, um, the, the calls are just more than we can handle on some days. We'll get three or four medical calls back-to-back. So that requires us to reach out and have dispatch bring in other fire departments to help pick up that slack. But it's not just here, it's, it's all over Buncombe County and all over western North Carolina.
Excuse me, Chief, can you clarify? You're saying that we're having multiple calls within the town of Black Mountain, or is that including the fire district?
In the town of Black Mountain.
Okay.
So, uh, most of it, and, uh, for, full transparency, most of the medical calls that are in the town of Black Mountain is over at, um, Highland Farms. So the new Givens Estate, uh, so there's, there's a nursing home there, so there's, uh, the calls there daily. Average response time for turnout, which means the time the tones go off till the time the truck rolls out the door on average is a minute and fifty-five seconds. That's pretty good averaging, especially in the nighttime hours. Our dispatch to arrival, so that's from the time dispatch lets us know that we have a call to the time that we get on scene is seven minutes and fifty-five seconds. Um, the benchmark that we try to shoot for is six minutes, but most of that sometimes is due to traffic, um, and trying to negotiate, uh, some of the obstacles on some of these roads where, uh, we have low hanging branches and trees, so we try not to, uh, not, I try, not try to damage our equipment. Uh, when we identify those driveways and roads, we try and reach out to those property owners and, uh, see if they can help us out with, uh, mitigating some of that. Training and accomplishments, so, uh, for twenty twenty-four, we had six thousand three hundred and seventy-five, uh, training hours. That's not bad for throwing in a natural disaster in the mix, to where training was suspended for about three months. And within that, we've had several of our staff achieve, uh, advanced certifications, such as their, uh, CFI, which is Certified Fire Investigator. Uh, we've had more people, uh, uh, achieve water rescue certification, technical rescue, advanced EMT, which is, uh, what was formerly called Intermediate Level Care. So you have EMT, intermediate, and paramedic, uh, EMT, intermediate is now called Advanced DMT. Uh, we've had a few get their inspector certification, uh, their certifications, public education, advanced leadership schools, instructor school, and we've had a few achieve company and executive fire officer designations. We've had quite a few through the, uh, work of, uh, not only the town's reimbursement program for higher education, but also the Fire Department has a education program, uh, through the Relief Fund Board, and we were able to have several of our staff achieve their associate degree, bachelor's degree, and even master's degree. And we have one firefighter right now who's currently working on his PhD. So succession planning is an investment in public safety. When we prepare future leaders today to ensure that the citizens we serve will always be protected by experienced, capable, and confident professionals, no matter who wears the badge tomorrow. So our Fire Marshal's Office has expanded its service to the community, performing more inspections and outreach programs than ever before. We've partnered with schools, local businesses, and community groups to strengthen fire safety education and ensure compliance with fire codes. This proactive approach continues to reduce risk and enhance safety throughout the town. A couple of highlights for the Fire Marshal's Office is, uh, we have a full-time Fire Marshal and a part-time Fire Marshal. Both of them, um, have focused on proactive prevention and community risk reduction programs. They've, uh, also through their advanced training and education, we are projected to have that division in our Fire Department nationally credentialed by the end of this year. Uh, they are certified in NFA, uh, N zero seven seven seven, which is Comprehensive Fatal Fire Investigations. So they are now certified to, uh, God forbid if we ever have one, a fatal fire. Both of our Fire Marshals also sit on the Board of the North Carolina Insurance, Crime, and Information Exchange. Uh, they both serve as the current President and Vice President of the Mountain Region Board. Um, and our Fire Marshal has recently been nominated for Western Director of North Carolina's Fire Marshal Association. So they're doing great and wonderful things in that, uh, in that division. So this is why I like to call in my shameful plug-in for the community. So we still have the Community Connect Program, and if you remember, the Community Connect Program helps us help the neighbors in Black Mountain. And all they need to do is go on our website and click on the, uh, the link, and what that does is they can put as much or as little information about their home or their medical needs, and those go into the dispatch system at, uh, our nine-one-one dispatch center. They use banking software, so the only way that we can review any of that information is when they call nine-one-one to dispatch us to their home. But that really helps us when we're going to the call of, if there's a fire, we can see how many residents are in the house, if there's any certain exposures that you want to let us know about that might harm us while we're doing our job, or even as far as a medical call to where your medical information and meds would be already in the dispatch link, and that helps us be able to render care more effectively.
Even things like pets, for example, right?
Yes.
You could tell how many pets you have.
Exactly.
If you're unable to speak at that moment, anything you want to tell them, you don't have to tell them anything, but...
As little or as much information as you like. All right, so looking ahead. So as we look to the future, our goals are clear. We're going to continue to expand the CERT participation in community training. We're going to strengthen our inter-agency coordination and communication, prioritize our apparatus replacement, our technology upgrades, and staff development, and most importantly, continue our unwavering commitment to the citizens of Black Mountain. One of the apparatus, uh, needs that we are looking for in the future, um, I know we, I have approached council in the past about assistance for purchases of a ladder truck. I'm not asking, I'm just pointing out to where if we had been able to acquire that piece of equipment, the, uh, benefits it would have had during, uh, Helene. To point out, um, it's a recommendation, uh, in some cases, but in other cases, it's a regulation that fire districts with more than five buildings over three stories or thirty-five feet are typically required an aerial apparatus. Uh, ladder trucks are essential for multi-story rescues, roof ventilation, fire suppression, and elevated hillsides and structures, and access to confined or difficult terrain common in Black Mountain. These are just some of the other areas, uh, where that piece of equipment would have made a difference. Uh, this is up, um, by Blue Ridge Assembly, where we effectively rescued ninety-three people, uh, from this area here, one, uh, that had severe, uh, I think she had a broken pelvis and, uh, femur fracture. It took a few hours and quite a few of our personnel, uh, during the storm to extricate those people out of this area. As you can see in the middle picture, uh, we had just a regular ladder to go across the waterway to get them to safety. Um, that was somewhat challenging, uh, of majority of the, if not all, were elderly, uh, individuals. And we still had hundreds of other calls for service at that moment, uh, during, during this incident. Uh, the other part, the very last picture there, I know it kind of blends together, but, uh, that one is, uh, up off of number nine, where we had, uh, zero to no road access. This was during the storm as well, uh, Tanglewood Mobile Home Park on the edge of the, uh, town limits, and, uh, right over here is, uh, where O'Reilly's Auto Chop is, uh, where, uh, the crews here were, uh, rescuing people out of, uh, a vehicle that was underwater. So the risk profile, uh, seventeen-plus multi-story structures and expanding downtown development, um, tourism growth and new assisted living facilities, increased vertical hazards. The capabilities would help us with fire flow. Townwide premiums, uh, would be estimate of three to eight percent higher without this piece of equipment. That's just the insurance pack, uh, impact. But in short, in closing, because I know we have a long agenda, so I tried to make this as short as possible, but in closing, I want to say thank you, Mayor, Town Council, and our citizens for your continued trust and support. You have stood behind us through one of the most difficult years in our community's history, and together, we are stronger because of it. The Black Mountain Fire Department remains committed to serving with professionalism, compassion, and courage, and I thank you for allowing us to protect this incredible community that we all call home. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate what you've done.
You need the whole staff, Chief.
All right. I got confused, so now we're going to be doing our changing, excuse me, what we changed on the agenda. Communication from town attorney, from town manager, from the mayor to the town council. So town attorney. Town manager.
Neither do I.
Josh, could you, um, could you share the town's official plans for Halloween?
Actually, I would prefer that Chief Parker do that.
So we have, uh, you know, just recognized, number one, we've been in contact with the League of Municipalities, which was just here, uh, and of course, they insure us for risk review, so they're, part of what they do is look at risk and they give you a synopsis of how you need to operate best and safest. And so through that, we've contacted NC DOT to let them know what roads are going to be closed, and tomorrow, uh, we are going to go pass out pamphlets to the neighborhood church street area, along that area, and let them know that between the hours of five and nine, that there won't be any vehicular traffic. We don't need vehicles traveling with two thousand kids walking. Uh, we're also setting up, uh, we've been in contact with probation and parole. They've notified any sex offenders that they're not allowed within the area, which is always a huge concern of mine, and, uh, they're dealing with us on that, and they're actually bringing some people in for us to have there as well. And then we're setting up a lost and found tent for parents. I always say for parents, but you know, parents and children, so we're setting up a tent. We're going to start communicating that out tomorrow. Really good safety plan, I believe, overall, uh, and basically following the League of Municipalities advice on what's best for us to operate within that area with all the people that attend.
We'll also be doing our town square like we did last year.
I know that the Viva Longuard Street, it's going to be music to their ears to know that the street is officially closed down.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, anything from the council?
I have something. So, uh, I'd like to thank everybody in the community and also Ann Phillips and the rest of staff who, um, organized the tree giveaway on, um, the anniversary weekend. I think they gave away two hundred and fifty...
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six trees. I've heard from many people who are grateful for those, and I think that was a really good, good event. I know Ann worked, uh, very hard to organize that. And also, um, I just want to acknowledge that, that, uh, there are a lot of groups in the community that I've been speaking to recently on various, and with, you know, who have various goals and various needs, um, who are growing increasingly impatient as, as, as we've crossed the year mark and, um, and things still aren't back to the way they were before, like, back to normal. Um, and, um, and I know it is a lengthy process. We are, uh, you know, town staff in particular are working incredibly hard to, um, move things forward with FEMA and with the state and with various agencies as quickly as possible, and progress is, is absolutely being made. Um, and, uh, I know that, um, November first, I believe it is, we're having a council retreat to, to go ahead and prioritize some projects that, um, can start moving forward, so, um, you know, be on the lookout for things, and I, and I, I know that it's hard, and I know it's taken forever, and I'm also very frustrated and, um, discouraged that, that we haven't made more progress, but that unfortunately is, is where we are. Thank you.
I'd just like to, um, emphasize again how, what an accomplishment it is for the, for our police department to have accomplished so much, considering there was a natural disaster in the middle of it too, but, um, perhaps Stacy can make sure I get the numbers right, but I think we're the, we were the first department in the state of North Carolina to be fully accredited. Is that correct?
That's with the state accreditation.
With the state accreditation, and then we just got our risk review for the second time in three years, and this is no small deal. It's a huge project, and for us to do it at all is phenomenal, and then, um, with the storm in the middle there, it's so, super proud of our department for being so, um, conscious of those efforts. And then the fire, the police, um, excuse me, the Fire Department as well, I think Chief Coffee left, but, um, there were a lot of accomplishments to honor in there too, and, um, I'm grateful I live in a town that, that does that kind of work.
Any comments? Okay, I'm going to go ahead, my, my main comment has to deal with the, uh, the Lakeview Center. Back last spring, I mean, last fall, uh, a company called Rugles went ahead and came in as an engineering firm out of Charlotte. Uh, I think they were, I don't know whether we contracted with them or whether Balfour did, but anyway, they went in and made the assessment of the downstairs of the Lakeview Center, and then also, they noticed at that time that there were some charred joists for the main floor, and so then, uh, their recommendation was to go in there and do scissor thrust, which means you take another joist and you just screw it on to the existing joist. I went ahead then and contacted Medlock Engineering, uh, had, going ahead and okayed this with the town manager, and, uh, so they came out and their conclusion was the same thing. I've got paperwork for both of those. And so then I went ahead and contacted, uh, Ewing Engineering, Ewing Construction, and Ewing Construction said that they could come out. They, I took Mitch Ewing down there along with his daughter, and they said that, you know, it would take like twenty, uh, one by ten by twenty feet long in this one section, and about eight, one by ten by tens in another section, and that would go ahead then and secure that floor so that the senior citizens could come back in there, because right now, the way that it says, the, uh, uh, building inspector says that we can't have any more than eight people in there. We could get this done, and the bid from Ewing is nine thousand six hundred dollars to get this done, and it would probably take two at the most, probably three days once it was in their, in their schedule. One other good thing about this is, as Mr. Bartlett referenced too, is that we rent that Lakeview Center. There's a lot of people in Black Mountain and from around the area that rent that out for, for weddings, for birthdays, for parties, for reunions, and especially with the holiday season coming up. So if we could get that thing fixed, we've now got ourselves in a situation to have a revenue stream. revenue stream that we can go ahead and if we took this money from, from the general fund, then we could go ahead and pay that back and within four months, we would have it paid back. The recreation department is, is in that room, but there is room since over the soccer center, I, since I'm the one that designed this soccer center and helped build it, there's room up front in the soccer center outside the field area to where they could, they could be. And there was, I'd heard something, don't know when, I can't recall, of that we were possibly going to go ahead and rent them a mobile home, a mobile trailer like we've got for planning and zoning. So if they didn't stay over at the soccer center, then they, they could stay there until we could get the, a trailer in there. But the big thing is, is that we could get the people back in there. Now, as far as FEMA goes, I've got a letter from FEMA that says that this particular, this situation with the joists was a pre-existing condition to the flood and it has nothing to do with, with the contract that we would have with them to fix the downstairs. So they do not need to sign off on this. They've already stated that they do not need to do this. So I want to remind the board that even though this is not on the agenda tonight, a motion by the board passed unanimously could then, this board could then discuss whether or not to go ahead and proceed on and authorize the Town Manager to get this senior center up and running. So I leave that with the board and hope that somebody will come forward and make a motion and so that we could vote on it, put it on the agenda, and then maybe, maybe get this senior citizen, senior center, center up and running. That can be done anytime during this meeting. That's what I've got. So we're on to consent agenda.
Seven A will be your monthly tax collector's report. Seven B will be your resolution to apply for Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization Program through CDBGNR. Seven C, resolution to apply for the Golden Leaf Foundation Open Grants Program. D, resolution declaring certain surplus property and authorizing private sale per NCGS 168-266C. Seven E will be a memorandum, I'm going to start up, memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina League of Municipalities for Disaster Recovery Services. Seven F, Debris Removal Cooperative Memorandum of Agreement with the NC Division of Emergency Management. Seven G, a resolution to designate certain town facilities as critical facilities for hazard mitigation purposes. We're going to pull seven H and seven I because those are going to come back later. Seven J would be a resolution to amend, existing resolution R 25-45, authorizing on-call contracts for grant writing and consulting services in support of recovery and resilience funding opportunities. Seven K, consideration of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget amendments, which will consist of, there will be a budget amendment for the Fire Department Mental Health Services in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. There will be another budget amendment in the amount of eighty-five oh five, I believe, for the Police Department to pull from their drug forfeiture funds. The next two budget, budget amendments, one is for a full-time public information officer. That amount is around fifty-four thousand dollars and the other budget amendment is for a budget analyst at the amount of around fifty-eight thousand dollars. Seven L will be a resolution to amend the town budget to transfer funds from the unassigned stormwater fund balance to the Helene Fund for Stormwater and Environmental Projects. Seven M, resolution seeking, selecting KCI Associates for the Asset Inventory and Assessment, AIA, and Capital Improvement Plan Services, authorizing the Town Manager to negotiate a contract. And that's it for your consent agenda. Minus two items, H and I.
Did you say they're coming back up tonight or they're coming up sometime in the future?
No, no, I'm sorry, they'll come back up in the future. Sorry about that.
Hey, do I hear, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'm going to accept the consent agenda as amended.
Discussion. I'd just like to make one comment on the five N, which is selecting the KCI Associates. One of the things that has been a hallmark of our community and a hallmark of western North Carolina is trying to go ahead and give business and deal with folks that are in this area. I know that there was a, there was some kind of a rating system that was in there and this KCI came up a little bit higher than somebody that is, has done a lot of work for us and has been a big part of our community. And I just, just the board could go ahead and change that around and, and could select the number two instead of having to go with, with what the staff collected, which would end up being, we support our own.
Wouldn't caution you not to put all your eggs in one basket?
What do you mean?
What I just said.
It doesn't make any sense.
Makes a lot of sense.
Is this seven I? Hmm? Seven I? Nah. This one doesn't, oh, you, you got the number, no, this is, this is not seven.
I have seven M.
Oh, yeah, now, yes, seven M. Okay.
I don't know if staff wants to speak.
They, they changed that. What was the, what was the number?
Seven M is what, is what it is.
It's seven M.
Very last one.
Thank you. Seven last one. Is that the board? The board can make a change on that if they, if they so choose.
I trust staff's discretion on that, but thank you for the suggestion.
All right, no more discussion.
I have one question to ask since you brought that up. What was the, I know we don't discuss costs, but can you discuss scores?
Well, the, the, the one that we've selected was the top scorer. They have more experience in, in these projects. They have more experience with federal funding. They have more time to do this project than the other two firms do. Pretty much every category they scored the best in.
Every category.
That's correct. You know, we don't have a scoring mechanism for local people. That's just not part of it.
But it's also just like whenever you're getting a bid from somebody on a, on a dollar basis, you're not required to take the lowest bid. You take the lowest responsible bid. So my feeling is here, we've got a responsible candidate that was number two. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Public hearings. Eight A. Public hearing for the Village of Cheshire Master Plan Amendment.
So I asked Russell to, to do this presentation for you all for a couple of reasons. One is, a lot of this started prior to my time and he's been with it for a long time. And another really important piece is I think that you all deserve to hear from the leaders we have on staff who are doing this work day to day and not just always from department heads. So with that, Russell Kate?
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Russell Kate. Thank you, Michelle. I'm Russell Kate, the planner and zoning administrator. And essentially, I hope, if this is, I hope I'm close enough, I'm not used to microphone. Essentially, I'll be going over, not just reading word for word, but going over the staff report that's in the agenda packet. So with that, I'll, I'll dive in. This is an item, or the, the request is, has come to the town from Sykes Reagan, the principal of the Village of Cheshire. And the proposal is to, essentially, the, this has reached you in the context of seeking approval for a revised master plan for the traditional neighborhood development, TND zoning district, which is almost exactly parallel with what is known as Cheshire Village, geographically parallel. The relevant ordinance sections are listed and it's essentially, I'll, I'll note that in the zoning chapter, there is a section for TND, just like there is for all zoning districts. And the, the section does, for, for TND, the section in parentheses says, "Master Plan And the establishment of the TND zoning district, council approved a master plan and that dates to nineteen ninety-eight, the, the original full master plan. And this is a revised full master plan. And I want to call out a subsection that states that approved master plans shall not be revised without resubmission through the approval process. And the approval process has the applicant present to the planning board and planning board makes a non-binding recommendation to council and then it's for council to vote on whether to approve. So still on page one, details of the proposal, the parcels that are zoned TND are in green on this, this is a clip from Buncombe County GIS. And now, starting on page two, essentially, there's a, what I'll be doing is, it's important, of course, that in your agenda packet, you have the full document submitted by the applicant that is the revised master plan. I am highlighting some of the most important elements. I'm not, the, the staff report isn't meant to simply restate what you, what you have in the full submitted revised master plan.
Just one second, please.
Yes.
Because you're, you're using nomenclature of two, but we have different nomenclature here.
Ah.
The staff report starts on a different page.
Starts on two twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Two twenty-nine.
Okay. And then I am curious, in yours at the bottom, does it say like page one of seven, page two of seven?
In the center, in the center, it says one of seven.
Ah, thank you. Okay. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
So this is two of seven within your packet.
Exactly. Within the staff report. So on page two, the, essentially, page two and the top of page three depict the full extent of TND zone parcels. The image on page two, page two of seven, is the conceptual town center with, within the overall, well, essentially, that is the name of the, the image, conceptual town center within overall master plan. It does show the full extent of the parcel zone TND. And then the image at the top of page two, I'm sorry, page three of seven depicts the, that same area, but in a broader context, within the entire area of that part of Black Mountain. The most important part of a staff report, of course, is the analysis section. So I just wanted to pause and stress that, that that's what I'll be focusing on. It's, it's the, really the rest of the report, or the bulk of the rest of the report. Item A, in the zoning chapter, the TND portion of the zoning chapter, explains how the TND zoning district is tied to a master plan and that is a, a master plan approved by Town Council. I'm not going to read, that's a direct quote or excerpt from that part of chapter four, but there's no need for me to read the entirety of it. One thing I'll note in the middle is, there's this, the statement, "No use or development of any property located in the district shall be permitted until a master plan has been approved by the Town Council." Like any master plan, just like the town's adopted comprehensive plan, now that's not a master plan, but there's a parallel. It's, it's an overall guiding document. It's not development standards. It's, it's, it defines areas and you'll, you'll see that in a minute. Importantly, there's a subsection that states that approved master plans shall not be revised without resubmission through the approval process. And our zoning chapter has a very detailed, very specific explanation of the approval process. The applicant has completed the first item, well, after, after, after tech review meeting with staff. Planning board review, this is at the bottom of page three of seven. Planning board review of the revised master plan in order to make a recommendation to the council. That was completed on August twenty-fifth. The planning board voted to recommend the revised master plan per the applicant making a few changes and it had to do with graphic depictions of specific areas and the applicant has, has made those, the revised master plan you have does incorporate those changes. The next step is this evening, a public hearing held by Town Council. Page four highlights that, and I'm just going to, page four of seven, I'm going to focus on the sentence right in the middle of the page, because I don't need to read extensively directly from chapter four. "The master plan is to be, quote, 'in compliance with TND design standards and the general provisions of the subdivision regulations.'" And staff finds that the revised master plan aligns, aligns closely with the design standards. And that's the key thing staff wants to express is that, and we, as we expressed to planning board. At the, the whole bottom part of page four of seven is a summary of why staff feels that way and each of the design standards is listed with a brief statement of why staff feels that the revised master plan does reflect neighborhood form standards, et cetera. At the very bottom of page four of seven, there is one item that the revised master plan does not appear to address in a specific way. It's called inclusion of affordable housing. Ten percent of units meet the affordable housing threshold established by Buncombe County Community Development. That's a very specific, quantifiable standard and just like the current master plan, the revised master plan doesn't specifically pull out data like that. Page five of seven, there is a sheet titled Illustrator Boutique Plan and it covers three pins, three parcels, property ID numbers, parcels in the heart of the TND area. And at the bottom of page, page five of seven, and this, this I'm not going to, I'm just going to mention that, that a, a large portion of the revised master, the updated master plan has area-specific depictions and they're listed here, blocks A through H. And they embedded in those block areas are phase, phase, phasing information and that is an allowed avenue in our chapter four, for, for phasing to be called for in a, in a master plan. At the, at the end of the revised master plan, you'll see that the applicant has the same design code obligations, commitments. It's what has guided the development to date and this design code remains intact for house, cottage, townhouse. cottage, townhouse, apartment, live work. The only other thing of note at the bottom of page six, page six of seven, one of the required master plan elements is that, quote, "All submissions for approval shall include an agreement and approval by the associated TND master association governing the overall document," end quote. And two documents were submitted, the community operating agreement and the town center association declaration. Town center doesn't refer to, that phrase doesn't refer to a part of Cheshire Village. It still refers to the overall community covered by TND. The only thing staff noted is that the copies of these two documents that were submitted are not fully executed, they're not, and there's nothing in chapter four, in the relevant zoning chapter, that details a requirement for specific legal status of these documents. I just wanted to note that. And that concludes the staff report. So, of course, I can, Michelle and I can answer any questions, but the applicant, I understand the applicant is here, so.
Yeah, I think both Sykes and Jesse are coming up to speak to you all, and we're happy to answer questions on the back end of cabin. Thanks for being so thorough.
Oh, sure. You're very welcome.
All right. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. People, if anyone wishes to speak, they may come forward, and they have up to 10 minutes to speak.
As you know, my name is Sykes Reagan. I'm the founder and developer for the Village of Cheshire. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and for your continued partnership over the last 27 years, as Cheshire has grown into a vibrant community today. I'm here to present the revised build-out plan for the Village of Cheshire, which has been unanimously recommended by approval by the planning board back in August. From its beginning in 1998, Cheshire was designed by DBZ and Company, pioneers in traditional neighborhood designs. Over nearly three decades, we've stayed true to that vision, creating a walkable, human-scale village that blends a variety of dwelling types, shops, parks, and gathering spaces in a way that reflects the character and the values of Black Mountain. The revised build-out plan, prepared by Allison Ramsey, Architects and Civil Design Concepts, honors that same intent. It's drawn precisely over the over-approved master plan, respects all environmental constraints, including the floodway and the 100-year flood plain, and maintains the balance of building types and densities essential to TND zoning. Importantly, the plan also deepens our commitment to community stewardship. I have established the Cheshire Foundation, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that will conserve and manage parks and greenways open to the public. These spaces are intended for education, concerts, art, and community gatherings, continuing Cheshire's tradition as a place for connection and creativity. In short, the revised build-out plan ensures that Cheshire continues to grow in a way that is thoughtful, environmentally responsible, and aligned with the town's long-term vision. So tonight, we respectfully request that the town council accept the planning board's unanimous recommendation and approve the revised build-out plan for the Village of Cheshire. Cheshire has always been about creating a new sense of place, a place to live, visit, and belong. Thank you for your time, your partnership, and your support. Both Jesse Gardner with Civil Design Concepts and myself are here to answer any further questions.
Any questions from the board?
So what were the concerns the planning board might have asked about?
Jesse?
Yeah, I think the planning board always does a, you know, phenomenal job of reviewing how all projects and the UVO ordinances kind of overlay with what we're proposing. I think they always look at, is this something we want to promote, you know, is it meeting the ordinance? And then, they often provide just feedback of, oh, we like it, or, so, Cheshire, I think you know it, it's one of the most amazing communities in Westmore Creek, and I think if we had 1,000 Cheshires, that would be awesome, but there's only one, and ultimately, we had a previous master plan, and we're really probably scaling down what was proposed in this area, in the big picture. So, I think, well, again, Sykes is a unique client of mine that always has a unique vision. And I think, from 20 years ago, markets changed, people changed, and a lot of things changed in Black Mountain. And so, it was probably due for a reset, and what we're bringing, what we're bringing with the remaining, you know, parcel left in Cheshire, I think is gonna be a great fit.
Any more questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to come and speak? Because this is the public hearing.
Can I ask, well, can I ask one more question? I'm sorry. Some labeling issues that were voiced at the planning board, does that sound familiar? Revised Block A, the work building, Block B, Dogwood Lane, that kind of thing.
I think Russell can answer.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one.
No problem. Yeah, I think I was quick to say, and I didn't pause, that was in the report, but because of, like, deadlines for staff report, but very promptly, the applicant fully addressed that, that, the two, those two items from the planning board had to do with, like, to make the graph, sure the graphs, the depictions could be easily understood.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Seeing no one rushing up to speak, I'll close, did I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So do we have a motion for the Village of Cheshire master plan amendment?
I make a motion, I move to approve the proposed amendment in the Village of Cheshire master plan, and find the proposed amendment is consistent with current state regulations, and promotes, protects the health, safety, and welfare, and is in keeping with good zoning practice.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, class unanimously. Next, we're gonna have a public hearing for text amendments, so, Michelle, if you'll come up and explain what this is, please.
So, item eight B is a public hearing for text amendment to chapter five, section 5.17, for mobile retail vendors. There have been some discussions with the planning board as it relates to some of the inconsistencies with mobile retail vendors and regular retail vendors. So, we were given the direction from you all and from the planning board to propose a text amendment to chapter five, section 5.17, to remove setback requirements and to find that the proposed change is, and the proposed change is consistent with current state regulations, and the recommendation promotes the health, safety, and welfare, and is in keeping with good zoning practices. So essentially, what this is, is a text amendment that would remove the building required setbacks for mobile retail vendors. What it would not do is change anything as it relates to fire code. So those regulations would remain intact.
And those would mostly apply to, like, putting a food truck or a mobile retail vendor, not a food truck, retail vendor, like, right next to a building or another structure.
Right. And I would defer to chief or to fire marshal for specifics around that, but yes, it would come down to, the only regulations that would then determine where a mobile retail vendor could be placed are the ones, in terms of setbacks, are the ones that have to do specifically with North Carolina fire code.
All right, okay.
I wonder if you could give an example or two of how this might be a felt difference?
Yeah.
Out of the bulk?
So, our regulations can require, you know, let's say there's 10 feet, that's a 10-feet requirement, but the lot that you're on may not have exactly that much space by the time you get setbacks from all the angles of the lot. So as long as the fire marshal is fine with the distance from the main structure in terms of fire safety, those other setbacks would be removed. And I think it, just given the density of particularly the central business district and how tight lots are, it's hard sometimes to get a mobile retail vendor in some of the spaces that we have and fully comply with what we would call for with a permanent structure, and also comply with fire code regulations. So it really is, I don't think that we're skirting anything, I think we're trying to be more friendly to those types of entrepreneurs, and also make sure that we're maintaining the fire code safety standards in place. So, that was really the goal in that. The planning board was really clear on that. We agree as staff that it is an issue that has existed for some time, and it's kind of hard to navigate. So that, I think we all were in agreement in discussion with fire marshal, with planning and zoning staff, that this still provides the safety that we're looking for, and fully follows the spirit of what was intended, but gives some possibility for those mobile retail vendors to have a place to be.
Great.
Okay. You got any questions? All right, thank you, Michelle. Did I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wish to speak to this? If you do, please come forward. You would have 10 minutes to address this text amendment. Not seeing anyone, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, do we have a motion to approve the text amendment?
I'll move that we approve the proposed text amendment to chapter five, section 5.17, mobile retail vendors, to remove setback requirements, and find that the proposed change is consistent with current state regulations, and find that the recommendation promotes and protects the health, safety, and welfare, and is in keeping with good zoning practice.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous. Okay. We go to seven, citizen comments. It's not the seven, it's nine. Citizen comments. Anybody want to speak? Been signed up? All right. No, we'll go on to unfinished business. Anything there, Josh?
No, sir.
Go on to new business.
All right. Item 11A will be Eagle Scout project. This is to construct a handicap-accessible fishing pier at Lake Tomahawk Park. Josh Henderson is not with us, he's on FMLA, he had knee surgery, so he will be out for a few weeks, but I would like to invite Mr. Berkeley Reese to come up, and he's gonna present this fishing pier to you. You should have this proposal in your agenda.
Hi, my name is Berkeley Reese, and I'm a life scout from troop 17. I'm here because I'm proposing my Eagle project to you. It will be a handicap-accessible fishing pier on Lake Tomahawk that will be located by tennis courts and picnic pavilion. I love fishing, and I want to make sure that physical disabilities are not a barrier to anyone that wants to catch fish and have fun. I have put a lot of consideration and time into this proposal. With the design considerations from professional civil engineer, with a specialty oceanic engineering, Steve Landis, I have submitted my proposal to Parks and Rec, and I hope that you'll consider my project for the benefit of our entire community. Do you have any questions?
Are you a scout master and his dad, or his dad?
Scout master only.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Berkeley, for offering to do this. I think it's fantastic.
Absolutely.
I'm just curious, the placement, was that selected because of the paved path and easy access, or how did you choose that section of the lake?
They chose because there's the handicap parking there, and there's the paved path to it. And it's also near the pavilion, where shelter, when you storm stuff.
I believe it's designed to fit four, or three, how many?
Four.
Four. Great.
I think it's a lovely proposal, and I'm so glad that you're here, bringing this to us tonight, and I appreciated the thought and effort that went into putting this together, so, thank you for that. It's a real act of generosity, dedication to the town.
Absolutely.
Very well done. The proposal's very impressive. I did notice that we'll have to drain the lake some, lower the lake a little bit so you can put the posts in the ground, correct?
Yes.
So, I don't know how we, like, do we anticipate lowering the lake anytime soon, or?
At future rain event, but, I mean, typically, we can, we can just do, we can.
You can just do it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We may like till after the leaves are gone, so people will enjoy the lake a little more, but, yeah, we can do that.
All right, go, hear a motion?
I'm sorry, before we do that.
We're done.
I see that you're using posts, was there any thought given to maybe using floats instead of putting posts?
There was thought for the floating, but posts are better because, like, the lakes, they're drained or it's full, so it'd be simpler to just do the posts, because also the bracket for holding it, for it to move, could break off, it's just fully low or fully high.
Very good.
And stability with wheelchair, sir.
I thought the same thing. I just wanted to hear his reasoning.
It's not a test, Archie. It's not a test.
No? Very well thought out.
I would move we approve this, the Eagle Scout project as presented.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks again, Berkeley. Good luck. Thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you.
All right. 11B will be B-City USA Asheville Butterfly Trail Station at Veterans Park. We're gonna have Phyllis Stiles to talk about this. Ennen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leonora Stephanile, and I hold a position with Black Mountain Recreation and Parks. Josh Henderson asked me to step in for him to introduce this project. I'm the current manager of the Dr. John Wilson Community Garden located in South Veterans Park. So, a little background, on August 12th of this year, Phyllis Stiles of B-City USA, Emily Sampson, who is the Black Mountain Pollinator Garden Coordinator, and myself, and a couple of others met to discuss the possibility of establishing a butterfly sculpture at South Veterans Park, marking the site as another stop along the Asheville Butterfly Trail, which is a conservation project with the mission of educating the public about local butterfly species while also enhancing beauty at each host site. During that meeting, we identified two or three locations that would be suitable to B-City USA and to Emily, who makes, has made such a beautiful pollinator garden out in South Veterans Park. We found a couple of locations that would be suitable. So on August 29th, Josh Henderson, head of Parks and Rec, Emily, myself, and leaders of the Disc Golf community, including Bobby Scott, who is president of the WNC Disc Golf Association, who's here with us today also, met to review the prospective sites for the sculpture, to make sure that everyone's collective needs would be met. And we agreed on two prospective locations, which you'll see in this presentation. Incidentally, during this meeting, we also agreed on a plan for how mowing should be accomplished at South Veterans Park moving forward, that would similarly meet all the collective needs of the pollinator gardens, the disc golf course, and the community garden. So coming away from tonight's meeting with the town council, we hope to have a memorandum of understanding signed between the town of Black Mountain Recreation Parks and B-City USA that will allow B-City USA to begin to seek funding for the creation, installation, and maintenance of the butterfly sculpture to be established at South Veterans Park. To be clear, no To be clear, no recreation and parks or Town of Black Mountain funding will be used towards the butterfly sculpture. It will be funded entirely by B City USA through their funding channels. And I will now hand the floor over to Phyllis Stiles of B City USA, who will speak more about the butterfly sculpture and the Asheville Butterfly Trail.
Thank you, Leonora. I'm delighted to be here tonight. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I have some handouts. Can I give those to you? And I think you already have the memorandum of agreement. Yeah. And I'd like to thank the folks that came out to support us tonight in this effort. As you see on the slide, this is the Asheville Butterfly Trail. We're a pretty new addition to all the tours that are offered in Buncombe County. And we just got started in 2024, just before Helleen. I want to thank the folks that Leonora mentioned for really getting on the ball and looking at how we could add another butterfly station here in Black Mountain at Veterans Park. And just a little bit of background about that location, it is a throughway for the monarch migration, and I hope that you're seeing the monarchs coming through Black Mountain right now. It's impressive. There are numerous quotes about people at the turn of the century saying that the sun was blackened out by the monarchs migrating in the fall through this area. So as you know, we've lost a lot of monarchs, and we're doing our best to rejuvenate the populations of monarchs that go to Mexico every winter. And that monarch waystation that Emily and Black Mountain have created is a major stopping point along the way, so we thought, what better place to put the monarch butterfly? Here's our plan for the Asheville Butterfly Trail. It's an initiative of B City USA Asheville. We founded B City USA in Asheville in 2012. Now there are four hundred and sixty cities and county, I mean campus affiliates in forty-eight states. So the movement has really taken off, and it's all about conserving pollinators that are in such peril and that we rely on so much. Our goal is to have ten to fifteen butterfly trail stations. Each station features a human-sized local butterfly, a butterfly that you would see normally in western North Carolina. We already have four stations live. The fifth station will be installed in November in Weverville. And so we're doing this as funding allows. We're a volunteer group operating under the auspices of Asheville Green Works, and we've been very successful so far in raising the money for each station. Each trail station provides a fun, free, engaging, and educational activity for local folks, for adults, for kids, for tourists visiting. They encourage selfies. They encourage you to go to our website where you learn a lot more information about each butterfly. And this has been such a learning experience for our team because I had no idea, we had no idea, that butterflies were so different. I mean, they look different, but the way that they go about their lives is dramatically different. It's very awe-inspiring. So each educational sign provides fun facts about the butterfly and just all kinds of interesting information that's expanded on the website. This was our first station. This was at the Asheville Minister Center. It's the Eastern Tiger Swallow Tail, a very familiar butterfly. And the Asheville Chamber of Commerce paid for that one. They're the sponsor and the host. Installed in July, right before Helleen, and we were honestly afraid those wings were going to fly away in the high winds of Helleen. We were holding our breath, and we can say that they withstood the winds, and so we're pleased about that. That's what the sign looks like with really compelling information to try to bring people in and get them involved in pollinator conservation. This was our second station in Weverville, and there you see Scotty Harris, who's now the Weverville Town Manager. And Green Script Nursery is both the host and the sponsor of that station. That was also installed in July last year, and that's what that sign looks like. Our third sign was on the UNCA Greenway. It's the Common Buckeye. And in that case, we found a whole new funding strategy. Two different people donated five thousand dollars each in memory of their parents, and that's a nice way to honor a loved one because these things are going to be around for decades to come. And so on the website, we have their pictures of the loved ones with links to their obituaries. The Glass Foundation also donated five thousand dollars for that station, and that was in February of twenty-four, and that's what the sign looks like. And then this is our most recent station. This is at the Audubon Sanctuary on Merriman Avenue. That's Gail Carmody. Her family donated the entire fifteen thousand dollars for that project because she's a bird lover and a wildlife lover, and so this was a great way for her to relocate here from Florida. This is something that she wanted to do in her retirement. And in this particular station, we talk about the connection of butterflies and moths to birds. We even have a quote on the sign that says, well, on our website at least, "More caterpillars equals more birds" because it is the primary and almost sole diet of almost all of our terrestrial birds, our baby birds. Their mouthparts aren't developed enough to eat more difficult, tougher-skinned things, but those protein-packed caterpillars are just what they need. So it takes about six thousand to nine thousand caterpillars for one nest of chickadees to fledge. And so we need those butterflies and moths, not only because we love butterflies and moths, but because we love birds. So this is our next one. That's the Red Spotted Purple. And so the Town of Weverville has donated five thousand dollars towards that butterfly station. The Futch Family Foundation has donated five thousand dollars. And then Weverville is also contributing money towards the stewardship of that butterfly. We hope to install it in November. We have a coloring book that goes along with the butterfly trail and a trail map that's coming soon now that the trail is coming together. We couldn't do this if it weren't for the generosity of so many folks. The photographers give us their photos for free. NC State's insect collection is taking pictures of their specimens because you don't go around taking a picture of a butterfly and then blow it up to six feet tall. It would be incredibly pixelated. So that gentleman there, Matt Bertone, is really helping us out to get these fantastic photos. So we have, as you can see, lots and lots of people to thank. So in closing, as Leonora mentioned, the Disc Golf folks came out and looked at the site to see what the possible locations of a butterfly station would be at Veterans Park, and they recommended two locations. Either one would work, in our view, because when we consider what the perfect site would be, we want it to be close to the host plants, and in this case, it's the Monarch Meadow, accessible to parking. We don't want it to be in the Disc Golf fairway. That wouldn't be good for the butterfly or the Disc Golf players. And we want clear signage directing visitors to the station because it gets a little confusing at Veterans Park on where you park and all that. So we'd have to have extra signage in this case. And so there's the funding breakdown. Each station costs fifteen thousand dollars, and five thousand of that is for stewardship because we do have to take care of these for years and years to come, and five thousand goes toward the project coordinator fund because we want to make this a whole educational program for kids groups from schools. We want to train guides, and we want somebody taking care of these for decades to come. But then five thousand dollars goes towards the direct expenses of design, production, and installation. And Beatrice McLean, Bea McLean, is here tonight. She has already pledged five. Grateful to her. And we're grateful to Josh Henderson. I'm sorry he couldn't be here tonight for supporting our proposal, and Emily for all of the work she's done for native habitats and especially for monarch waystations, and of course, Leonora here. So that said, thank you for considering our proposal. We think you have the perfect location for the monarch, and believe me, every single place wanted the monarch, but we saved it for Weverville because of that monarch waystation. Oh, I'm sorry. Oops, 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 oops. So I don't know if you have any questions, but I welcome your questions.
I think this is really exciting, and I am just thrilled that you were able to meet with the Disc Golf folks and work something out that is a great example of community sharing space and in a way that works for everybody. So, thank you. And Bea, thank you for being here as well. Beatrice, sorry. B City and Beatrice. My brain made that connection.
I just want to ask one question. Someone has told me Mr. Burnett lives out in Norfolk. Of the cycle of the migration and the fact that one butterfly, unlike a bird, does not make the entire migration, but that the monarch then goes so far eating these butterflies, and then the succeeding generation continues on with the journey. And then, when it's time to come back, they go through the same thing. So you may go through, and I don't know the number, and I'm saying, eight generations of butterflies to make that migration.
Can I?
Is that correct?
Can I just tweak that a little bit because it's even more impressive than that? We were up in Nova Scotia last year when the monarchs were still there. They had not left for Mexico yet. Those monarchs we saw in Mexico will make the entire flight from Canada all the way down to central Mexico, and they will overwinter in Mexico. They'll mate right about Valentine's Day and make their, start making their way up through Texas. And that same monarch that I saw in Nova Scotia could make it as far as my house in Asheville, North Carolina, and lay an egg, as they have done, on my milkweed, and it weighs the equivalent of a raisin. And so it will live for up to nine months to make that journey. But then its offspring in Asheville, North Carolina, will lay their eggs on milkweed, and they'll start passing the baton to get up to Canada. And so that's when they share the load, and it's multiple generations. But that fall generation will live, it's called the supergeneration, and it will live for nine months to make that incredible journey down and back up.
Wow. Thank you. Never stop learning. I appreciate you.
I used GPS to get here.
Very good. Thank you, ladies. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I just want to actually.
Oh, excuse me.
They've put words in my mouth that were a hundred percent correct, and I just wanted to say thank you to these ladies and Josh and the town for getting all those folks involved to make sure that we have a great, workable solution. So the positions that we identified are not in the fairway, so everybody can enjoy the park correctly, and I'm really encouraged by the conversations about mowing and getting the park a little bit more usable for the Disc Golfers in the future. So thank y'all so much, and good luck to the both.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the proposal and MOU.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, you've got some more wildlife. Eleven C will be the North Carolina Wildlife Federation Habitat Restoration Proposal. I'm going to forget the gentleman's name, but Sally I know is here.
Luke.
Luke.
Good to see y'all.
I'm Sally Cochran, and I serve as the president of the new chapter of the Swananoa Valley Wildlife as part of the North Carolina Wildlife Federation, and we started about seven months ago. Previous to that, last year, we had the same proposal of planting trees at Lake Tomahawk, and we were starting to go through the motions of approval as Helleen came. So the good news is, we were just kind of thinking about starting a chapter. Now we have started a chapter with the help of the North Carolina Wildlife Federation. Luke Bennett is Western North Carolina Conservation Coordinator through the North Carolina Wildlife Federation, and he's here to talk about our proposal for tree planting at Lake Tomahawk.
Thank you, Sally, and thank you, guys, for letting us speak this evening. Really appreciate it. As Sally said, my name's Luke Bennett. I work as the Mountains Conservation Coordinator for the North Carolina Wildlife Federation. NCWF is a statewide 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization working to protect, conserve, and restore North Carolina wildlife and habitat. As Sally was just saying earlier this year, NCWF created a local chapter of the Wildlife Federation to add to our growing chapter network across the state. The new chapter's name is Swananoa Valley Wild, and they cover Black Mountain, Swananoa, and Montreat. The chapter offers the local community opportunities to restore habitat, to connect with nature, and to learn about important wildlife and habitat topics in their region. I will mention, because it's really inspiring to me, their leadership team is all volunteer-led. They're incredibly strong. Sally Cochran sitting beside me is their rock star president. Cindy Simmons, John Lehman, and Lironda Teepel are also Black Mountain residents and serve on the chapter's very talented leadership team. The chapter has already hosted a variety of successful projects and programs in the Swananoa Valley. Now, the chapter, with the approval from the town, wants to plant native trees at Lake Tomahawk in an effort to reduce lawn grass and restore habitat for native wildlife and improve ecosystem services like reduced stormwater runoff, climate regulation, clean air, pollination, while also creating a natural and vibrant space for the people of Black Mountain to enjoy. The proposal we submitted includes details about the project and the site. To summarize, we are looking at a point-three-acre site, about thirteen thousand square feet. This area is located between the pool and the tennis courts at Lake Tomahawk. We will be planting ninety trees with approximately twelve feet of spacing between each tree. We'll plant fifteen-gallon overstory and understory trees such as red maple, river birch, white oak, and red bud, to name a few. The exact species composition will largely depend on nursery availability. If given approval for the project, we would schedule the planting for Saturday, November fifteenth, from ten a.m. to two p.m. We would prep the area a week in advance by pre-drilling holes with an auger. We would mark off the area with flags, and we would stage the trees where they will eventually go into the ground. The planting would be done with approximately twenty-five to forty volunteers recruited and organized by the local chapter, and we would be sure to recognize the Town of Black Mountain on any social media post or inspiring stories following the planting. After the planting, in early December twenty-twenty-five, we will put down cardboard and mulch in order to eliminate the remaining grass in between the trees. This area will not need to be mowed or weed-whacked. In the fall of twenty-twenty-six, the following year, we will plant understory shrubs to fill in the space. We would also like to install educational signage in twenty-twenty-six, highlighting the benefits of native trees and the wildlife around Lake Tomahawk. NCWF is offering to fully fund this project, up to ten thousand dollars. That will include native trees, native shrubs, mulch, and educational signage. In summary, this is a great opportunity for the town to get nearly a hundred trees planted for free, an opportunity to improve the ecological value and function of the habitat surrounding Lake Tomahawk, and also an opportunity to inspire and engage the Black Mountain community with an impactful project. I talk to the Swananoa Valley Wild chapter leaders almost every day, and they are without a doubt genuinely passionate about Lake Tomahawk, genuinely passionate about Black Mountain. And given the town's approval, we would do everything in our power to make sure this is a successful project. So we really appreciate your time and consideration of this proposal. Thank you. And we will take any questions. And we will take any questions.
So the vision, once, you know, after phase two, after you've planted the shrubs, it wouldn't actually be usable space for people, right? Like, it would kind of be its own, like, nature habitat?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, I'm a big fan of trees. Let me just say that right now. I'm not against trees. I love trees. I live almost next door to Cindy Simon, so I better love trees. My concern is the location. And I'm not negative about this project. I'm just delighted and over the moon that you've got such a great partnership and a new organization, and you've really thought this whole thing through. My concern is leaves and roots. And there's stuff underground here. There's electrical things. They just got their lighting back on the tennis courts because it runs from the pool. And your project now might not impact them, but yours from near the roots could have an effect, too. So I'm just not 100% sure that that's the place... It's like the one place that's not broken right now, that we want to go in and start making big changes. I get it that grass is not optimal in terms of pollinators and bees and birds and all of that, and I couldn't be more enthusiastic about making this happen somewhere. But the tennis court people, I don't know if you were here at that...
Yeah.
You were here. They were not keen on it. They appreciated being asked. And it gets back to the last presentation we heard about working with the Disc Golf people so that the Monarch Butterfly Project didn't... It's about coordinating in closed spaces. And also the pool. I mean, having a lot of trees near a pool is not necessarily a great idea. So I guess I would have reservations about that. And I don't mean to sound like a negative Nellie here. I am enthusiastic, but I just want to voice some things that jumped out at me. And the notion that, well, I guess the town staff would have to answer this one about whether they have the capacity to water things on a regular basis, daily for the first week, and, you know, regularly after that until their roots are established. I just don't know what our staff capacity is. I know that in other areas of town, the certification committee works on, they're asked to water things a lot, and they just don't have the capacity to... They're overextended. Maybe Josh can... I'll ask you a question in the DM here.
We'll do the best we can watering.
Right.
That's all I can promise.
Right. So whether it's enough is another question, but I do know that part of the problem on the dam, there were trees growing along the dam at one point, and those roots took a toll on the structural integrity. And that's why it had to get... Part of the reason it had to get shored up. And I just worry about the long-term effect. The tennis people told me they had, at one point, we had planted shrubbery around the tennis courts on the outside of the fencing, and they had to be removed just because it started to take a toll on the fencing. So I would just ask that we consider, is this the best location for... Did you say 90 trees?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. That's a lot of trees. And I walked down there today just so I could visually picture and make sure I had it right in my mind. It's a lot of trees, and they would affect the tennis courts, I think. So I'm just... Those are my questions.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying, and I'm an avid tennis player myself, and so we certainly want to find a way forward that's recognizing all the members of the community and making sure that this is the right site. And maybe that involves us doing more due diligence on our end to see, like, the longer-term impact of these projects. I would ask, what is your recommendation there? To just do more site prep, to do more research, or what does that look like?
I... What I'm looking for...
Please, yeah.
I had the same concern as far as the trees next to a tennis court and the pool, I think I would probably be happier with this, because I love trees, too. Don't get me wrong.
I do. Got to have that disclaimer.
Yeah, yeah. I have a couple of oak trees in my yard that are well over 200 years old. So, is there anywhere else that you've looked, maybe around there, that might be a better site than close to the pool?
How did you identify the site?
Yes.
Do you know?
I think last year, we had... I don't have that sketch with me, but it was proposed three separate sites, and two were in the floodplain area. So that's why we kind of struck that and went with the place that we ended up.
We also have 60-some acres on the east side of town that we're looking to... That's been given to the town from two different donors, and that we're looking to put it in as just an outdoor park. And I think that would be a great place to look.
And what's the timeline on that?
Well, the timeline on doing the park, who knows? But the land is there, therefore you could look at the land and say, I mean, if you're looking at a third of an acre here, and you've got 60-some acres, the math will tell you you've got 180 different spots that you could, you know, figure out where to put it.
We don't yet have a master plan for that area.
Yeah. So that might be years off.
Yeah. Well, we've got a grant, too. Go ahead and get a master plan going. But it's certainly not going to be issued, that's for sure. But I think that that would be something... To me, that'd be the place to look.
I really want to continue this conversation because I think this is such a great, amazing opportunity for us, and I know that a lot of heart and soul has gone into this. I actually had a different concern, which is because we're needing to do building repairs at the Lakeview Center, is putting young saplings next to it where we might need to have heavy machinery. Is that good timing? And then the leaf concern, I hadn't thought about the roots and where the electrical is. I guess my ask would be, you know, if we can set up some kind of meeting to look at where electrical wires and other utilities are buried and identify some other sites that could be better candidates, and hopefully work with y'all's timeline a little bit more closely.
Well, I appreciate y'all's feedback, and that makes sense, and thank you for laying that out. And to say, I would definitely welcome the opportunity for follow-up emails and, you know, meetings and communication, because the Wildlife Federation, we're really committed to Western North Carolina, and we're really committed to Black Mountain as well. But again, we don't want to just barge in and have our agenda. At the same time, you know, we want to work with the town and make sure that we find the right project that works for everybody.
I hate being a Nellie.
I'm so enthusiastic, and I don't mean to give up, like...
No.
And I know I sound like that tonight. I'm wondering if our new... Fingers crossed someday we will do the project down on Craig, the new park down there, that maybe if that might be a place, but I don't know when that's going to happen either, so...
Yeah, you know, I love the idea of this being around Lake Tomahawk. I think that, you know, there is an absence of wooded area around a lot of the park, and that plot in particular tends to just be a collection for geese poop and not used otherwise, but I hear your concern. So I would hope that we would continue this conversation and be able to look at other parks, parcels around the park, or I don't know if there's an opportunity to kind of split it up a little bit, if that's possible, but I do hope that we can continue this.
I know y'all asked earlier for kind of, you know, what are we looking for? I wonder if that gives you enough clarity about next steps, or if there's more information that we can provide tonight.
I think right now, that's plenty of information. I appreciate it. And again, to say that we're not going anywhere, and the Wildlife Federation has some resources and some funding, and we're really building this local chapter, and they're doing amazing work, and now it's just a matter of, you know, finding sites, finding places to put the resources.
I think we all want longevity for this project, so let's make sure we get the right spot.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. I can tell it was a ton of work getting this to this point, and I don't want to...
We'll be back.
Good.
All right. Next would be 11D, transfer of mobile office lease from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to the town of Black Mountain. Jessica, will you lead us through that one, please?
I am happy to. So as you know, we have two mobile units for planning and public works down at 304 Black Mountain Avenue. Those were originally provided through direct federal assistance through the Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA. Originally, that was to be for a period of one year with the opportunity to renew, in which case we would take a release at that time. However, USACE is demobilizing from the Halleen event in Western North Carolina. I do not know if that is the case in other states, but that is the case here. And we were told in quick order that we had to assume the lease. Now, it will be funded through the FEMA PA program, but we have to pick up the lease and get that executed lease back to them in order to continue having those provided to us. So this is a transfer of that agreement to the town.
And so that... And so we have how many months left on the original lease, or will this be a new lease?
It is for the balance of the current lease, which I think was executed in May, if I remember correctly.
I think spring, yes.
So what is your anticipation of getting the work done at the Public Works Building so that these would not be needed anymore?
I do not have that answer right now.
Okay, because I'm looking at the cost on this. It's $17,000 a month, and if you multiply that times 12, I mean, you're looking at, good gosh, that's over $200,000. I mean, we could just about buy them for that.
Millions of dollars to get back in the Public Works Building. And those units are, I don't even know how much they are to buy outright, but I would say probably pretty expensive.
Yeah, they were custom designed for us, but FEMA PA program will obligate those funds to us to pay the lease.
Would FEMA cover our purchase of them?
No, because they're considered temporary.
And FEMA is obligating those funds not at the end of, you know, two years from now?
That is right.
On an ongoing basis?
That's right. It'll be either a monthly or every other month schedule of those funds for us to pay. It'll be a larger amount if it's every two months.
And is that just guaranteed through the end of this lease?
It is to that with the option to renew. So we will start fresh at the end of that year with one that's just originally between us and the vendor.
So is there a maximum amount that you can lease them, like, one year, two year, and then you're done?
Three is normal, but in this event, we're expecting to see most extended.
And so, but just to clarify, as far as expenses to the town, we would pay upfront? We would get properly reimbursed?
We should be getting things allocated upfront. There might be, like, a slight lag time where we get caught up one month, but the idea is that they are paying us on a schedule just to make the payments.
And we have that approved by all the channels? That is for certain that we are getting paid.
Yeah, they told us we had to do it, or they would be gone, so...
All right.
They originally gave us two weeks, and then they gave us everybody a slight extension, so we appreciated their generosity.
Well, I'd like to move that we approve the mobile office lease transfer as presented.
Okay. Any discussion not on favor?
Aye.
11E, resolution to apply for state revolving fund, SRF, funding for the water system improvements and repeal of resolutions. Resolution numbers are R-25-41 and R-25-42.
So this is just a slight change to our previous resolution, which was apparently hyper-specific. I didn't need to be quite so specific, apparently. So we are making an application to the state revolving loan fund, of which we have 50 extra points for because we are the recipients of an emergency bridge loan with NCDQ. We originally specified relocating high-risk water lines from stream banks and digging some municipal wells. After a site to the watershed from the engineers who are doing our FEMA work, many vulnerabilities were brought to our attention, largely to antiquated well housing, treatment housing, and water lines in high-risk areas coming out of the watershed. So they are preparing a scoop of work that is just going to include watershed, probably about $2 million, and about $1 million toward wells. How many wells that gets us, you kind of don't know. You might have some duds in the process. And then about $1.5 million to water line relocation from high-risk areas. We do have another application for hazard mitigation related to water line relocation because it's extraordinarily expensive, and we have many high-risk ones, so we are putting that ask in multiple places. The state is very enthusiastic about this application, and McGill Engineering is writing the application, and they wrote 12 of the 16 applications, that won the first round of applications, so we feel very confident that we have a strong application.
So when you talk about drilling new municipal wells, where are you speaking of drilling these?
They will tell us, but mostly the goal is to keep it on our property so it's simple and straightforward, but not in the watershed. We want them elsewhere so they're less concentrated and vulnerable to geographic risk hazards in that one area.
We didn't really lose that many... I mean, we didn't... We have a problem with the well, exactly for the well and the shaft and the water and everything. We all have the well house.
The point is we can...
We didn't do anything... We didn't lose anything with the wells.
That's not the point. The point is that we only produce half of our water, and we have... It puts us dependent on someone else, and so we would like to produce more of our own water so we are not dependent if we lose that connection. The other point is that we could have straight-line winds in the watershed and take down all 10 wells at once. So we'd like to disperse the wells in other areas so they do not experience risk in the same place all at the same time.
Sounds great, but that's 362 acres. We don't have 362 acres outside of that. I'm just trying to say, where are you going to find a place to do them? It sounds good.
They'll be distributed.
Yeah, but where?
I do...
I mean, we've been trying to drill wells ever since I've been on this board 12 years ago, and we've just had very little luck. About the only place now to go is try to go up towards Blue Ridge and try to see if we can talk them into... I think it's fine, but I mean, I'm just saying, just right now, I don't have a clue as to where in the world that you would go ahead and find an area that you could put in another 10 wells.
There'll be professionals reviewing the...
Yes.
Yes, we review them, yeah.
And the 10 wells will not be going in the same location, but dispersed?
We don't know how... They'll be dispersed, and we don't know if we'll get 10. We might get three or four. It just depends on where they're located. That drives the cost primarily. We'll be looking primarily at areas that are easy to connect to the distribution system. And that's it?
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the resolution as presented.
Any discussion? Not on favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
11F, discussion of emailed public comments procedure. This is something we took upon ourselves during COVID. I don't know that we ever even had a policy in writing that said we would do so, but we did so, and we continue to do so, and we're bringing this to your attention to see if you want to continue to do that.
I'm personally not a big fan of being in microphone. I'm a person not a fan about being in a microphone for written comments because there's not... You really don't have a lot of room for censorship in comments. It's just... And when you use stupid comments and someone listens to them, although somebody else wrote it, it appears to come from the town, I'm just not a big fan of it. Public comment period is typically for those folks to show up and give public comment. So you might have someone write five pages of comments. You know, it's just sort of a chaotic concept, and I'm very concerned about it from censorship or desire. or desire to censorship of what it means, the town being the voice of these things. So it's rarely seen where I'm elsewhere working. I know it's presented in an emergency situation, so I'm not a big fan of, from a legal perspective.
I did have some questions around, you know, a commenter has three minutes. They speak at their own cadence. If someone were to present a comment, an emailed comment, that was very lengthy, I mean, at what cadence are we speaking, and do we cut it off if we're reading it aloud? I don't think we've really had that problem before, but I do see the potential for some issues here. I like, as Alice has mentioned before, or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Barry has mentioned before, it does provide an opportunity for those who, for accessibility, and those who may not be able to attend in person to leave comments. So I was wondering if there was a way to have a, you know, a kind of a hybrid model where all the comments that are emailed by a certain time can be entered into the minutes as if they were spoken and presented to us, you know? We receive the emails anyway, but.
I think entering into the minutes and me speaking are two different things.
Correct, they're two different things. So they can be included as part of the record, the proceeding, without reading them. You would have, you would have looked at them because they would be part of the record. So that is a nice hybrid. You're not endorsing it necessarily, you're just including it as part of the record. So I'm fine with that concept.
I've really been of two minds about this, and, yeah, Councilmember Hay, you presented my concern well about, you know, accessibility for meetings, it's a Monday night, once a month. I mean, sometimes people just cannot be here. I also hear there's like this investment piece of the time that people do come forward to speak. It's because they made this a priority, and they're here, and yeah, I'm open to this kind of proposed hybrid of having them in the minutes. And I want to just encourage, to continue to encourage folks to submit emails when they can because we do read those, and it's a great way to get some thoughts to chew on before a meeting about things that we're considering and discussing, even if folks can't be here in person. So I appreciate you sharing the legal concerns on that part, too.
I tried to look up this afternoon what Asheville, Buncombe, and some of our other neighboring municipalities do, and I couldn't find any written policies either way, so I don't know.
They don't, they don't read them.
They do not read.
No. And I'm worried just that with today's technology and AI and catfishing and everything, you know, who knows how well-fed it all this stuff is anyway? It just opens up a potential of us worrying about the integrity of the content. I just, I think including it as the record is a nice middle ground.
But not every email that gets sent to us will be included in the record. Only the ones that say, please include this as a comment.
Some people do not like their comments to be publicly available because even though technically speaking, anyone that emails you in the business, it is public record. Maybe it would maybe not understand that. So I would say that there needs to be a specific direction to include it in the record.
The minutes.
In the minutes.
Minutes versus, yeah, okay.
This is, this is all a record of this proceeding, of this package, minutes.
Oh, I hear you, but every email is in the record, but only those specified would be in the meeting minutes. That.
Meeting record.
Record, thank you.
I would just request if we could do this route that, Wes, if you would be able to clearly state how to submit comments on the website, either in person or submit them with a certain language around, so there's no ambiguity around it.
Absolutely.
Great. Do y'all need?
If that's what I'm hearing from the consensus, that's how we're going to vote for it. I don't think I need you to vote unless.
Nope.
Craig looks like he's given that, so, okay. And then lastly, you have a couple of examples of templates that I told you I would provide. I think you've seen these probably a couple of times. I'm not going to say that one's any better than the other, they're just a couple of examples. I would say this is, this was not something easily obtainable, like I thought it might be.
Well, I appreciate having a couple of different examples, and I feel like there are merits to both of them. I'm going to try to keep this brief since it's almost 8:30, but I felt like the first one, is the first one the Salisbury?
No, the first one's Asheville.
Oh, okay, I've got them. In the Asheville one, sorry, I'm still gathering my thoughts. I liked that it was more succinct, I thought the statements were probably a better fit with some, just some language tweaks I noted. But I did like about the Salisbury one, that the number scale was just a little simpler, just one to three with an NA option rather than one through five. And I liked that it had a narrative portion at the end, and I liked those prompts. I think I've given you that written feedback, though. All my chicken scratch.
My only comment is that when I leave a number review, I like to have an opportunity to leave a comment, too. So the first one, the Asheville one, provided space for that, and either is fine.
We got to mesh them based on what you're saying and bring it back to you. Unless you're going to hammer it out tonight, I don't know if there's a big hurry to have the template in place, but we can get that done.
It'd be easier to look at if, yeah, if other folks are okay with that.
If you need to rush it, I'll fill it out.
We just do one, one star, two star, three star.
No, just a Google review?
For next meeting, we're going to bring back a combined version that hopefully will suit you all. If not, we'll make some more changes, we'll get it right, and we'll bring it back together.
And also some recommendations about when this should happen. And what time of year.
I mean, is it possible to go ahead and have at the next meeting kind of a, I don't know if policy is the right word, or just kind of a process, procedure? Put together?
So, the next thing is a closed session.
Did we take off the water system assets?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Well, we did, we removed the water system assets.
Water system assets?
Yeah, we did, we did, we, yeah, we did that already.
So we did that?
Yeah, we did that already, I remember talking about it.
Sorry.
So this is NCGS 143-318, or, 318.11A6.
I, I don't, no.
So we're doing.
Give you a statue.
Okay.
We're just citing the statute, which is NCGS 143.
I'm going to be honest, I just heard numbers.
318.11A6.
I'll move that we go into closed session.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.